Okay, we'll call to order the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, February 18th. First item is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chanzet? Barron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler? Malley?
Here.
Uier?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
M McFadden?
Okay, I did receive emails from both Drew and Elliott that they would not be here tonight. Next up would be a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for BATV. And then the third would be the approval of the minutes for January 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Second? Motion by O'Brien, second by Knopf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything tonight?
No.
Okay. And it stays as is. Next up would be matters from the public. What do you have, any questions or comments from the public? Okay.
We were just going through the questions.
Next up would be Resolution 20-36-R, authorizing adoption of a complete streets policy. Per the email that came out on that, this is kind of a continuation of, how many years was it? 2007 we did the bike?
The bike and the comprehensive plan.
Just another, in a step of trying to codify and put everything into words, what we're trying to do with the streets that we have.
Yeah, so.
Andrea?
Alan gave a brief summary, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. Both Prairie Street and Main Street are federally funded projects, and with the regulations that follow, they are looking for complete streets, which are providing access for all users, both transportation and vehicular. So, as you saw in both our Main Street and Prairie Street designs, we have bike lanes and provide accommodations for such. So, when we are applying for federal funds, such as we did for those projects, they are now ranking them and giving points to communities that have complete streets incorporated into their projects, and then also have a formalized policy. It can be in a resolution, a policy, and any type of legislation. So I went with the route of a policy and took some examples from the surrounding areas and just kind of memorialized all of that into a policy, which we would still follow what we have been doing previously, and taking those designs to council and getting everybody's feedback here to make sure that they're in agreement with what we are looking at. But this formalizes it, showing that the city does want to continue designing projects, new projects, and if there's a chance when we're reconstructing a street that we can incorporate some of these items into them, that we will be looking at that as well. And then, yeah, I think that's pretty much it. I don't want to bore you with all the details. You have the policy in front of you. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? I think it's good. Mark? You gotta wave at me.
I gotta wave at you?
Yep.
I like it. There are some parts that come across as vague, and I don't know if we want to start setting like a threshold, like if we were to say that if it's going to cost 20% more, then it's not worth it, or something, that we can have a guideline for future councils that they know what we were thinking. If somebody wants to change it later, that's fine. I mean, I think it's a great start, but maybe it's something that gets amended later that has maybe teeth to it that allow us to not have to take every single time to say, well, should we do it, should we not? I don't know what everybody else thinks about that.
I think we should always do it. I wouldn't say that it's a matter of cost necessarily when we look at these projects. I think it's a matter of usability for all users. I don't think there will always be roads, and I think there's language in there that kind of specifies, you know, that it's not going to apply to all because, like, on-street bike lanes don't belong on Kirk Road, and there are some streets that don't need transit accommodations, you know, a bus is probably not going to go down the street, and that's fine. So, I think it allows it to be case-sensitive, but it allows it, I like that it's both, as it said in the opening, that it's a checklist and it's a mindset, that anytime we're redesigning a street, we have to think about moving people, not just moving cars. And I think we do a really good job of that, and from what I've seen after sitting here for years, I think we've been doing a really good job of that. There's just some undoing of decades of only moving cars in the right of way for a long time. So, it's making up for that old time when we go to reconstruct a street and say, there are other users here, and we need to prioritize, prioritize as well.
I think we should look at every project on its own merits also, and not just give staff that determination. I think it's, you know, every project is going to be different, and I like what you did here, because I think with some of the verbiage you have in there, it's going to open up the opportunities for us to maybe do more streetscapes, which is a complete street. That is the goal of complete streets, I believe. You know, that everyone is able to use and share the road, as Abby was saying, I mean, the bicycles, the cyclists, the pedestrians, the automobiles. Automobiles are no longer primary. And in most major cities across the country now, they're saying the automobiles are no longer primary. I mean, out on the freeway they are, but when people are walking, you know, a couple of trips I've had to Europe, I mean, they have squares that automobiles go through there at five miles an hour, and people are just walking around. I mean, everyone is in the square using it.
Yeah, and that's what.
And I think that could be the goal of Batavia, and I've said it before, but I think it should be the goal of the council and the future councils to attain that, because I think it's going to draw a lot of people into our city to enjoy what we've done here. And so I think this is a good document to start building upon.
Yeah, and it is the goal, and they say that it does promote walkability and even economic growth and development, because more people are then traversing through it on feet or even on bike, and it gives you more time to take a look around, as opposed to kind of going through it a little bit faster.
Exactly. You know, people walking through the area, I mean, they stop and they converse with their neighbors and their friends, and they see people. You're driving through, quick wave, and you're through. So, you know, most downtowns, I mean, throughout the country are now looking to do that, you know, sponsor pedestrianism, that we have people walking around, going into shops, and make it more safe and more comfortable for people, you know, not just to get them walking somewhere, but to make it a stroll through the area. And I think that, again, this is a good document for that.
Yeah, and Mark, just to your point, as I was looking through a bunch of different ones, there's a bunch throughout the Chicagoland region as well, some people do put percentages, 10, 15%, if it's more than that on the cost of the project, then they're going to table that idea. So I guess it may just be on a case-by-case as well, if, you know, it's just, this is some guidelines. If you guys want to incorporate that, I'd be happy to put something in there, but again, it may just come down to dollars and cents, and if that's financially feasible, and that changes all the time, and so, you know, you can leave it a little bit more open-ended as well, that it can be looked at. But either way, I'm open.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. I just wanted to kind of throw it out there as a discussion point. It's not, I'm not hard set on saying, no, we have to do this. I just wanted to kind of get some opinions.
Yeah, and there are some people that do put that out there, so, I mean, it's all up to what you guys feel is best for the city.
Marty?
And I was just going to kind of say exactly what Abby had said, but also even with the pedestrianism a little bit further as to what we've been doing the past few years, thankfully with people like Steve Heronimus, that it's not just people with two good legs that can see, that we're incorporating sidewalks and accessibility in ways that we don't view how the world should move. And people like him that have brought out that pedestrianism means something else entirely, and we are including more of our residents in those when we put them into design.
And I think one of the things that this shows to me is our ability to adapt to any of the different situations that we have in time. We have Kirk Road, you'd never want a bike path out there, as you said, or a bike lane out there. But there are so many other things that this covers within all the different facets of the town, and I think that's something important that we need to have, and, you know, be able to remind ourselves and our staff that that's the goal. I mean, that's why we have the bike path, that's why we didn't back off of the bike lane on Prairie Street, why, you know, why we want to do this. There's a plan, we want to try to stick to that, we want to try to incorporate that into the jobs that we need to do on those streets, and expand, you know, everything that we can within our budget. And I think Mark makes a great point that, you know, I'm sure that there's going to be some point in the future where somebody says, wow, we got a really good budget, you know, cycle for the next two or three years, we can get a lot of this stuff done, and then there's going to be other times when we don't have the money to do any of that, so we're going to do the repairs we have to do on the streets, but we may not be able to fix everything the way maybe we really want that. But I think it's good to have it as a plan and to try to stick to that, and try to get those things done and completed in the areas that we've kind of laid out that need to be done.
You know, I just want to comment on Marty's comment, and that's a good point you make, Marty. I mean, we want to be inclusive, all-inclusive, with all walks of life and all races and religions, and what we seem to forget sometimes are the handicapped. And your friend Steve, you know, he's part of our community, and all handicapped folks are part of our community, and we should keep that in mind also. So, thank you for making that point.
Abby?
And too, if we look for, in the future, if we are doing a good job of making our town more connected, we're looking at land use, and we're making places, you know, that it's not just nice to walk, but you can walk to get to somewhere. It's not a necessity to have to drive for every trip. Walking and biking overall is a lot lower impact on our streets, so in the long run, if we get more people out of their cars, over time, our infrastructure costs will go down. I heard another city statistic, and I would love to see it for Batavia too, you know, since 1950 till now, how many people did we add, but how many lanes of road, how many miles of road did we add? And you wonder why we're so strapped when it comes to infrastructure. We're adding a lot more miles of road than we are the people that can support it. So if we get more people that are using alternative modes, overall budgets in the future, you know, Batavia will be a little bit more resilient. Be great. So thank you so much, staff, for bringing this up. I really appreciate it.
I'll make a motion. We recommend the city council passage of Resolution 20-36-R, authorizing adoption of complete streets policy.
Second.
Okay, motion by O'Brien, second by Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Regular agenda? Can we talk about it?
Talk about it.
I think we should.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up will be discussion on the new entryway signage.
This is a continuation of the discussion that we had, I think it was last week, two weeks ago. Made some suggestions to design, and Griffin will present.
This meeting never goes in right the first time. Doesn't matter.
Where's Griffin?
Well, you know, shave every three days, go to beard guard every three weeks, a beard eventually wins out, but, you know, in the meantime, got to change it up.
It's actually his little brother.
Yeah. He's getting paid big time to present at this meeting. There you go. I think that adequately adds the suggestions in that you guys had, it keeps it simple. Even if we don't go with any of this, I think this is, if you like it today, good enough to go out and have Public Works quote to get something exact, and then we can kind of move forward with business from there. So if you have any comments or suggestions, or if you think this is a pretty good base, let me know.
I like it without the pillars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it looks a lot cleaner without the pillar.
Definitely.
Bigger impact. Your focus is in the middle, not on the end.
Right.
Yeah.
And you still keep the size too, you know, so it can still be very prominent without being outlandish.
So Griffin, what's the white on the right, the two on the right, what's that?
So, that's kind of more general signage, where it would be a stucco design, where it would stay on, the colors would be there, it would be a little bit brighter. It's just a cheaper and more efficient way to display that without having it be a pattern. But there's other options as well, and when we get into the quoting, I mean, we can go through a myriad of different things.
Different materials.
Yeah. And like you guys were talking about, and we've brought up, even if you're just to take that one on the top right there, that can be made into anything, you know? It's a very clean-cut design that won't have any issues with different materials.
I kind of like the wave.
Let me see, without the pillars on the side, I like the wave better.
Top.
Yeah, and is the top left, is that just meant to be a representation of natural, that we wouldn't curve it, it just?
Yeah, that was more to Jennifer's suggestion last time, where she wanted to see the stone on the left, and then the stone and the writing as well. So it's just kind of a different version on there. And with that kind of project, they would probably just kind of etch that into the stone and then add pigment on top.
Is that actual stone, or is that man-made?
I don't know what I'm talking about material-wise. This is the creative part.
Yes. This is the design. I like the stone, but I think you lose some of the logo in it. I think it fades into it.
Yeah, I mean, if you go with the white and then maybe with the stone where the logo is at, because it kind of adds a little bit of a rich feel to it, like, you shouldn't like save on the.
Yeah, great, I think if you did that hole on those two on the left, if you did that whole welcome to Batavia in stone, that's going to be outrageously expensive.
Yeah, but just do it with the white.
That lettering is stone.
No, the whole thing is stone, and etched and then pigmented.
I see what you're saying.
So you're wasting a lot of pigment, and you're covering up a lot of stone for not a lot of reason, in my opinion.
One of the things that, when we were working with shopping design, they recommended man-made material for the reason that if this was an entryway sign that you were passing as you walked into a building from six feet away, you would notice that it's man-made material. But when you're driving by on the road and it's setback, they said, today's man-made material, unless you were the director of Public Works, you probably would have a hard time telling.
Well, and four years later, you'll know it's a regular stone, as it starts to break apart.
Right. The regular stone tends to require more maintenance than the man-made materials. But we could, and I think we always intended on getting quotation for materials. What would you think about, are you thinking about going with the lighter background on the left or the stone background on the left?
I like this. Where the logo is.
I agree with you there.
Yes.
Okay, seems to do pretty.
Looks good there, but you got to be careful of the contrast, that it's that much and it stays that much contrast. I mean, the nice, I like the stone better, but I'd be worried about that.
Perhaps you'd like us to take these concepts back to the firm that we were working with, and they can share their ideas on, you know, improvements that maybe we can make what you see here.
Yeah, because I mean, I think this is an investment for, you know, the future, and if maintenance is going to be a big issue if two or three years down the road, these things fade out to where you can't see the difference in it, then I don't know that that's a great idea. I kind of like being able to have them out there and have a longer life cycle between whatever has to be done to maintain them.
And if it's faux.
And not 30 or 40 years like the other one.
Yeah.
Five or 10 years to do something would be fun.
Had a good life.
Those were designed for 10.
Yeah, those were done 20 years ago.
Is there consensus for the top left?
I like the bottom left. Either one on the left.
Is there consensus generally with these four, though? Would we come to an agreement on one of these four if we were to bring them to the firm?
I think so.
Yeah.
What would that white be made of?
One option could be stainless steel.
Right.
Because I was just thinking, like, if it was white, that might just get dirty, and you might end up with that to begin. And just delayed. You get a two-for-one of that. Just change it.
That's the 10-year mark.
Right. Any power line.
If it was stainless steel, and then either enamelled or however, they would etch the logo onto it, I could see that.
Could there be a combination of both faux limestone for the logo part, and for the lettering, and then another sign could be the steel, be kind of a wink towards the limestone of Batavia and then the foundries of Batavia? To have some be limestone-ish, made out of faux, and then maybe some of them be stainless steel or metal, kind of showing. Location, location up left, a lower left, another location lower right? Something like that?
I think we should stick to one design, you know, as far as whether it's just flat across the top or has the wave in it. If we use different materials in them, I don't have an issue with that. I mean, I've been in a lot of cities that have different-looking signs or different-sized signs on different entryway roads.
So what about just raise a hands, flat across the top, or wave? Just rule that one out.
Flat across the top.
What do you call the one on the top left?
So, flat.
Flat.
Flat, but then it's got some character. All right, so the top two are the same with the kind of flat, and the other ones are wave, so flat top or wave? Flat top.
I don't like the flat top on the right, but I like the flat top on the left.
Sheesh, killing me.
No, it's fair.
It's not one.
The flat top with the colic in the back, is that what that is?
The structure is flat, but then the rock is natural.
Right, it takes some characters.
Yeah, I think that's really cool.
I don't like the all-flat one.
Yeah, no, neither.
All flat. Nope.
Wave.
All right, we've eliminated one.
Wave.
Lot of waves.
I like the wave. We could have the erratic stone look on the top and then a wave at the other side.
So we could eliminate the top right.
Then it's like the glory.
Yeah, top right's gone.
Good if you wanted to keep the, like, the top-left, like, logo where it's more flat and rounded, and then go into the wave off of that, kind of like a flag, a little bit.
I'm okay with that.
Either way, I mean, that's a small adjustment.
Top-left logo with the bottom-right.
No reason. Right.
Like a twister game.
You knew this wasn't going to be easy.
We got it.
I love my job, so I don't care.
We're almost there.
He just thinks, well, I got to do is get eight of them.
He's like, I'll shave into a different person. They won't know what to do, they're confused.
Who is he?
Well, beard aggression proposed something else.
Wait, why does it say Geneva?
No, we're annexing Geneva.
Wow, look at that logo.
Ta-da. How nice and clean. All right, I'm going to kind of go through here and cover everything, and then at the end, I can go back to any slides that you want, any questions that you have. I have most of the data not memorized, but just in my head in terms of specifics, but if you want something very specific, I have it all in Excel documents, so I can bring that to you or email it out at any time as well. I'm just going to pass out real quickly before, this is the information from the National Community Survey, so this is an example of the draft of what the survey would look like, and then the process for it, and then our personal timeline that we're following right
No. No, it's not even gone out yet. Although I would hope so.
All right, so I'm going to start off by covering our electronic media, so we're going to be covering our social media as well as our e-news that we have. So if we look from 2018 to 2019, that's what our focus is going to be on. Normally, when I would give a presentation like this, we would cover about five years, and that would give us a better base to figure out where we're at, what's normal, and where we should be making improvements. So there's still some good stuff that's come out of this past year, but we don't really know where that benchmark is yet, and we won't know for another year or two to really get into it. So Twitter, we've gone up, Facebook, we've gone up. It's great that we're still improving there, and e-news, we dropped a few, but that wasn't a focus so much this year as it was a focus on getting people to open the emails, so I'll show you that later in the presentation. So for new followers, kind of weird, we also did have a couple of incidents, one in 2018 with home rule stuff, and then 2019 with the shooting incident that happened at Stakenake, so we did have a couple of things that were interesting there. But once again, we don't have a baseline here. So we gained a lot more Facebook, or we gained a lot more Twitter followers than we gained Facebook followers this year, but that could be attributed to different news stories happening and going around. Typically, when a company does this, they go, okay, we're trying to sell this much of this, or we're trying to make this many people come out and do this experiential kind of thing, and then it's a lot easier to track. But when we get hit with stuff like, oh, hey, out of nowhere, here's this, you know, coronavirus, or there's, you know, that kind of stuff can change how many people follow you, so even if it is good following to be on there, maybe they're following because of some kind of news. So our total reach, this is really important, so if we look at our webpage, and I'll get to that after our electronic media, but our webpage has about 400,000 page views. That means people that just go to our website, generally speaking. If we take all of our social media combined, we're almost at 2 million that are looking at our social media, so it's three times what people are doing on our websites. That's really important to think about when people go, hey, you know, social media, you know, can be really frustrating, or it can be really exhausting, or why are we doing this, or this, that way, and the reason we are is because this is where our users are. This is where the residents go, this is where everybody reaches out, and it just kind of depends on which handle that they prefer. But once again, if you take a look at 2019, we reached, you know, 1,215,000 people impressions, but 800,000 of those are from the shooting, you know? And then if you look at 2018, there were about 100,000, maybe 200,000 that were related to the home rule stuff. So once again, establishing the benchmark, it'd be great if we have a year where it's not something going on that's a negative kind of news thing. So, very important to note, though, that it's three times more than our websites, and that's how people are engaging today. So this, yeah.
What's an impression? What do you consider an impression? Somebody going and viewing an article, somebody replying or responding or reacting?
So generally, an impression, and people do have different definitions for this, but generally it means that it was seen. So you either saw it on your news feed, somebody clicked a reaction button somewhere else, somebody saw it shared from, so it combines all of these opportunities for somebody to see something that we have put out there that we're related to. And so that kind of gives you an idea of, okay, wow, this is how far something that we do spreads. So that's kind of the idea behind it. And all of these analytics are gathered from the social media sources, as well as the sources that we use on our website and through our different software, so it's all pretty reliable, at least within where it's contained, so that we know year to year, we're getting consistency. So this is really great. Our e-newsletter in 2018, we were using our Civic Plus version, and I looked through a lot of the different things that we had sent out when I had started at this job, and I noticed that there wasn't a lot of consistency. I noticed that we were having trouble getting people for different kinds of emails, we were titling them weird, so what I did, probably a few weeks after I started here, was I just changed it to say City of Batavia Weekly E-News. And then a few months after that, we redesigned it to give it a little more appeal, and our open rate on average for this entire year has been about 40%, which is great to have compared to 25. That means that people are at least opening the email every time that it goes out, almost half of them, and that's fantastic. So we'll be redesigning it again in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully that'll make it a little more appealing. I'm taking back, excuse me, data on what people are thinking about when they get this kind of news. We're checking different timelines, so even though we've been doing e-newsletters on every Friday at 6:00 PM to keep it very consistent, that may not be the best day for us to be doing it. We're checking different timelines, so even though we've been doing e-newsletters on every Friday at 6:00 PM to keep it very consistent, that may not be the best day for us to be doing it. So we do have information that comes from MailChimp, which is what we use now for e-newsletters, that will tell us what they think an optimal time would be. So we might be switching this to be on a Tuesday and we could see that percentage go up again. It's just gonna kind of depend on the data that we're gathering, which is kind of the theme for this year is gathering data. So here we are at the websites, page views and sessions. Sessions means that somebody went to our website and they actually toyed around, they were doing something, they took an action. A page view means that they just are at one page, they're just at the site. So page views are always higher, but sessions is really what you want to look at. So once again, good information here, we are improving. I'm not sure the exact percentage that we went up, but it's definitely good that people want to visit our site more each year. And we do have a little more information about our website analytics going back and it has been a steady progression upward, which is really great to see. So our top pages, this is always something else that's really interesting that we don't necessarily think of in operation, but as a resident, when we go to the website, we look at, hey, what are the top things that we look at? So this graph represents 25% of everybody that views the website. So a quarter of the people that are coming to cityofbatavia.net are looking at first, 100,000 of them, the homepage. Then about 20,000 of them are looking at jobs and then another 20,000 are looking at online utility services. And then the Agenda Center, Brush Collection, Leaf Collection are kind of all interchangeable at about 8,000. So from there, the rest of the website pages break down to about 1.2% and then go down for how many people of the total are looking at it. So then it kind of divides out pretty evenly and descends down to about 2,000 until we get to some miscellaneous pages. So this tells us though, that we need to put a lot more emphasis on some of these public works projects and campaigns. People want to know about the Brush Collection, we did that Leaf Collection that extra week that we didn't have to do this year and people were so excited and happy that we're putting that out there. We put it out on social media and then they come back, they check the website. So this stuff's all good to look at when we're looking at planning future campaigns and really just trying to get the information out there in more clarity than we have in the past. So this is another interesting thing, it's not too much of a change, but we are seeing from 2018 to 2019, less tablet users, more smartphone users, less desktop users. So people, once again, they're on their phone, they're on the go, they don't want to go on their laptop, they want to go to their phone. And we have seen this go up each year, so it used to be pretty dominant with the desktop and then the smartphone has just kept taking it and I think it's gonna continue this way. So what's planned for this year? What we'll be focusing on, first of all, is communication focus groups. Then we're gonna be doing a National Community Survey, citywide photo contests, capital improvement project campaigns and the City of Batavia logo implementation, among many other things. These are just the highlights of what we're going to be doing. So communication focus groups, so this is kind of where we go back to the e-newsletter, we go back to our website navigation and the user experience behind it, our social media print mail, BATV interactions, signage, Neighbors Magazine. All this stuff is how we directly communicate with residents. And today, communication is no longer a one-way street, it's two. And we get residents to go, hey, do you hear me? I absolutely want my input heard about this specific project. And we go, yeah, we can see that, we get a direct message, we respond to them. So with all of this, we don't necessarily get some of these other things with that direct feedback. So if we have focus groups and we can separate the demographics to people that are residents of Batavia, have about eight of them and then have people that are non-residents, another eight. And keep doing focus groups until we accumulate some trends where we can see, hey, it looks like this non-resident group doesn't consider Batavia for this specific dining option, even though we've put out this specific social media campaign. How come that's not working? Let's talk about it. And so from that, we can kind of glean some insight into how to improve that communication and keep that two-way flowing instead of residents feeling that they're not heard or that they don't have a way to communicate back and forth with us. Excuse me. National Community Survey, this is terrific that you guys voted to do this, this is the industry standard for cities, counties, governments across the nation. The thing that is the most important about the community survey is that we have a ton of data. And what they do after we send this survey out is they compare us to people that have similar demographics and then we can see where our residents rank compared to residents of towns that are similar in population, similar in, you know, ethnicity, similar, so on and so forth, income and beyond. And that allows you guys to have a great benchmark to say, hey, you know, everybody thought this about this area and it looks like these other three cities that we're looking at, they're doing something different. Is there something that we can do different with that? So the point of this is having that great comparative data and then also being able to benchmark and split out into quarters as well. I know you guys voted to include that, so you'll see in each quarter section of the city if people feel different. And then you can relate directly to your wards and see if there's something going on in that area. So you guys have the timeline there, the welcome sheet that tells you kind of how it works and then more information on what the detailed survey is. And so from this, we're gonna get a lot of great data. These questions are also, have been tested hundreds of times and they have been put together by professional researchers. So it's a little better in how it's worded and how it's laid out to gather that information. So this will really be invaluable combined with census information because where the census is gonna give that baseline of, you know, who people are and what's happening. This survey doesn't necessarily include as much of that, but this gathers what's going on in your community and how people feel about different things. So combined together, you'll have an amazing reference to go off of when you improve your strategic plan or when you want to talk about things you want to improve in the community. So we were talking around about this and we thought it'd be a great idea to get residents involved and have a citywide photo competition. We have a photo library right now that has some good historic photos and we have some, you know, officers being sworn in. But when it comes to putting together creative pieces or putting together a showcase, if you will, of the City of Batavia, we just don't have the breadth that we're looking for. And we figure that if we engage the community and allow them to submit photos that they have, because there's plenty of pages where we've seen really beautiful Batavia photos and allow us to use them. We figure we can coordinate with Water Street Studios and have a gallery pop up on one day and highlight the winners, obviously rewarding them as well. And then using those materials, you know, is a great way to tell people, hey, these photos are taken by our residents and this is how beautiful our town is, that you can go out and take this picture and yet it's a good showcase for us in any kind of professional setting. Capital Improvement Project Campaigns, we do a lot of really cool and amazing stuff, especially, you know, public works and engineering and we just, we don't highlight it enough, I feel like, right now. So our goal is to be very rigid in scheduling and working on marketing campaigns that go out to people so that not only do they go, oh hey, I've heard about this because it's been on social media X amount of times and there's been this many updates, but also allowing people to engage more and to go, hey, you know, I have a specific question. Great, we have a third-party software or site that you can go to and you can give us that question. Or, oh hey, we have collected all the emails of people that wish to receive these updates and now we'll be able to give you a day-to-day response on this kind of construction. All the while, making it very palatable and easy to navigate without people going, hey, what's going on with that? I'm not sure. And then the very cool thing about this that we plan to do this year is to get video coverage in a time-lapse scenario. So when we are looking at redoing a street or we are looking at changing some sort of infrastructure, we can see through the seasons how it happened by gathering that same shot each time. And that's always a great showcase to put out there as a city as well. And I plan to give us more of a toolkit for us to make more animated and video-type projects. Because right now, even though we're doing a great job getting information out, I think we can take it to that next level and produce some quality pieces in that way. So the logo implementation, so since it was passed in December last year, we've been really hard at work implementing this into city documents, internal systems. There's a lot more than you realize when you start going into this process, so we've just been keeping track and I've been working with staff to make sure that we size everything appropriate, that we put everything out there for other municipalities and agencies to use so that it's all consistent across the line. And through this process, it's been really great because we've taken, you know, documents that over the years, you know, 30 years using the same logo, you could have a couple of different versions out there and it's now being consolidated into one. We're rewriting the style guide of how we present ourselves and how we make the city viewed to the public and to professional partners. And I think it's gonna be really, really nice when everything comes together. So we're right near online implementation, we're planning on March 1st in coordination with the people that host our website. So we're just working with them on a couple of different design ways to get the logo up on the homepage and have it coordinate with everything else. And then social media will be easy to put up there as well and then we can start kind of branding how we post things and focusing more on the direction of the narrative that we want to tell people with this information. So beyond that, external project implementation, kind of like we're talking about with the website, sorry, not the website, the entryway signs, stuff like that, where I'll just say, hey, you know what? Now that we've kind of gone through this, we've established everything, here's some big ticket items, if you think this is something that you want to move forward with, here's kind of the cost we're looking at, here's what we could do. And then that'll kind of be by a case-by-case basis and could take, you know, a couple of years to kind of figure out what priorities and things that you guys want to change with that. And then from there, it's kind of the status quo and we approach stuff as it comes, but just mostly making sure people stay within a style guide and keep that consistent look throughout the agency. Here's just some promotional materials that I designed this year. I do have a little bit of a design background in me, but it's been nice to kind of break into that again. And I'm looking forward to taking this new logo and the stuff that we're working on and making us some really nice professional pieces. And then kind of a closing here for goals and benchmarks, for me looking at the year would be, of course, follow through, complete this logo redesign process and have everything efficient and cohesive. Looking for this year to grow that e-newsletter subscriber count. I think once people see a better product and they get the information explained, we talk to the focus groups, we'll be able to gather enough information to make this an even better product for residents while also keeping them informed and on the same page. And then, once again, we want to take all this data, everything that we get from the National Community Survey, the focus groups, everything, and figure out how further we want to approach social media. I can tell you by looking at all the posts from this year, obviously, people love to see when we promote our police work, when our public works folks are out there working on projects, that kind of will coincide with the capital improvement project campaigns. Anytime the city, you know, is out there and helping people is when we have seen the biggest push. And even though we try to make sure we're very on time with news articles that come out, those still don't get as many hits as when they see us doing what we do best. And so we're gonna figure out the best way to communicate that and hit all of our major project areas. And then one last thing that we're focusing on with this year, I've met with Main Street a couple of times about this and now that we have a new logo and kind of a direction where they're going, we want to make sure that we develop a consistent design solution for wayfinding downtown. Which can include bike trails, you know, just letting people know that you've entered into Batavia and make it clear where paths kind of divert. Along with saying, hey, you know, here's River Street and, you know, here's these boardwalk shops. And having it all look and seem the same so that people feel that cohesion when they come into the town, that they go, man, this place has it together because I just saw this and now I go another, you know, three blocks and this coordinates so well and I know where I am. So that would be the goal with that as well. And then, any questions that you might have or concerns?
Griffin?
Yeah?
Going back to the community survey.
Sure.
When you talked about that, are there gonna be options for how the community can submit that? When they go online and do it? Can they get a paper?
So what they do is they take a random sample and they randomize it like by four different layers to really make sure that it's kind of spread out evenly, but it's, they don't necessarily focus too heavy on run demographic, if that makes sense. And then from there, those people, if you look in the timeline, will get a couple of postcards in the mail and they're gonna get the survey, I think, twice. And then from there, we'll also have a link digitally and then we'll keep that separate where anybody will be able to respond to that one. And then have our core paper surveys where we're gonna get most of our concrete information. So that way, we're gonna get even more data and then we can combine them, we can look at them separately. And that's kind of the beauty of doing this is that we'll have so much to work with, we'll have so many things to dive into, it'll be great.
Question on the Facebook page?
Yeah.
Is it solely the city's Facebook page or how does the police one, because I know that one gets shared a lot, does that count in the numbers? Or are they?
Police and fire page are not in the numbers yet. The way, because we've talked about this quite a bit, because there are other cities where it's all one, there's other cities where it's split up and then it's split up even further. We do see in the future combining everything into one and then obviously multiple access, people that can post at the same time to keep up with it. But at the current time, and specifically I would say with the police department, the way that people engage, once again, where you can see the website versus social media, they feel a lot more comfortable giving tips or information straight to that police Facebook page right now. So we're a little hesitant to make that switch over because we don't feel that they would necessarily feel the same way sending it to the city page. So we're kind of testing to see how that's gonna continue and then how the users reflect and what people say, hopefully gathering that information from, once again, focus groups and survey data to go, okay, well, you know what? People would be comfortable doing this and we won't see much of a drop. Or, oh, we gotta keep this separate because, you know, we were right with our intuition here and here's the data to prove it, kind of thing. So it would be great if it was all one, but we haven't decided yet if that's the best thing to do and we don't want to make that decision without any data.
Yeah, and I guess that's where I was thinking, if those are the numbers, just our face, I know that there's a lot of interaction to.
Yeah.
Police and fire, so those numbers overall, it doesn't help you with city data, but we know that there's a lot of communication that the city's putting out.
Definitely, yeah. And we put out, I mean.
And that people are interacting with too.
No, exactly.
Police one, that always gets shared. As soon as something comes out, that is like a wildfire.
And what we do too, kind of internally for responding to social media, we let groups disseminate as they will, we present the information. If somebody is on our page or our post and they put something out there that's misinformation, we'll respond with something to say, hey, thank you so much, you know, for commenting on this, but here's the actual information. We just want to make this correction so that misinformation's not getting out there. But we are not anytime in the future going to be engaging with anything else. And if we see positive posts, you know, we'll like those comments, people supporting, but we find that it's better to encourage people that are putting something in there that's positive versus the criticism, so.
And so one of the other reasons why we choose not to engage in discussions that are happening on other platforms is because we want to be seen as the resource for the accurate information. And so that, what we like to do is if we see misinformation out there, post it on our own sponsored pages and allow people who are kind of ambassadors to share our correct information out there on those other platforms.
And what you can see, that we've looked at case studies at conferences that I've been at and with other colleagues, that if you open up too much of commenting back and forth, people will actually trust the city less sometimes. Because they'll go, oh, who is this? Who's behind the keyboard? What opinion is this? So this keeps it rock solid, saying, hey, we're just here with the information, we're the city, we're trying to help. Please email us if you have detailed questions.
Yeah, right.
Thank you for your update.
Yep.
And I always like to just say a word, a few words about everybody's accomplishments for the year, because when they stand up there and they do their presentation, they by no means express all of the accolades that they truly deserve. And Griffin, being the newest member of the team, has made incredible strides during the time that he has been here. I'd point to two different projects that really show the impact of what he's bringing to the table. All of you were involved with the logo project, so you saw all of that occur, but that e-newsletter. But that e-newsletter, when Griffin came to me and said that he was looking at a different format, I was a little concerned because what we were using was Civic Plus, something that was integrated with our website platform. And he explained to me that the platform was a bit clunky so that when you added things, they looked like different formats and it was very difficult to add in pictures and things seemed inconsistent. And he, what he has done with the MailChimp format, it is now so much easier to read and the proof is in the numbers. So when you see that readership jump from 25 to 40%, I mean, that really speaks volumes about the insight that he has about what makes the difference in the way that people want to receive communication. And the other is the way that he has worked with the engineering department to assist them with the communications about these massive projects that they're doing. There's one thing that Griffin asked me, he said, what do you want our communication to accomplish? I said, you know, taxpayers are paying a lot of money and they want to see that they are receiving something of value for the property taxes that they are paying. I know no better way of doing that. I think that that project is going to have a huge impact for people to see that projects that are costing millions of dollars are really making an impact on everybody's and enhancing their experience with their community. So I applaud him for taking up that role because engineering does, makes a tremendous effort at their own communications. I think it's taking time for all of the internal departments to realize how they could utilize a resource, the resources that Griffin brings to the table. But he really connects with each department and assists them with being able to enhance their communications. An example would be that budget and brief, working with Peggy on taking a document that's hundreds of pages of long, pages long and trying to put that into a concise document that's easily digestible by the community. So Griffin, you've done just an excellent job with a number of projects this year and looking forward to these projects this year, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is Strategic Action Plan.
Okay, the Strategic Action Plan. This was our first full year of implementation and so what I'd like to do is do an overview of the accomplishments that have been made on each one of the Strategic Action Plan items. I've got a couple of documents that I am working with here. One is this really large spreadsheet. The spreadsheet is a means of looking at one glance at all of the four quarters in any given year of the Strategic Action Plan. And it brings together not only the objective itself, but the separate action items that need to be taken to accomplish the objective, the timeframe within which we think we can accomplish that, who is the responsible department, an estimated cost, and then the status of where we are at in accomplishing that particular objective. It's a big document. It would be very hard to see if I put up on the screen, the writing on it would be very teeny tiny. But right on our homepage, under Government, when you just hover over Government, the very first item there is the Strategic Plan. So any resident who is interested in taking a look at this document can pull it up just by clicking on that tab. It will take you to a landing page that is a one-page overview of the Strategic Action Plan. And off to the left, you will see that you can click on any quarter, quarterly update that we have done. And after this presentation today, tomorrow, Griffin will post the fourth quarter Strategic Plan as well as, I've created a document that is the summary of what actions that we have taken on each one of these. And so I think for the presentation tonight, I just kind of like to do an overview of this document. Our goals in our Strategic Action Plan fall into four categories. We have transportation goals, we have goals that are related to our downtown developments, we have goals that are related to the river, which runs through the heart of the city, and also goals related to infrastructure. Under each one of those, we have several objectives. So I'll turn to the transportation goals and the three objectives that we have under there. The first was to investigate the feasibility of a parking lot for train commuters. And that was quite an education process, really, this year. We started off talking with our very good partner, Pace Bus, because we knew that if we did create a parking lot for commuters, that the bus service from that parking lot to the train station was going to be an essential element. What we learned from our sit-down with the Pace staff is that having multiple forms of transportation on a shorter travel route have not been successful implementations for them. It is more so eliminating long transportation. So they are experiencing success, say, with their transportation to O'Hare Airport from the parking lot that exists on Randall Road and offering people a relief from that longer commute. They also came to city council to inform us of a couple of alternative modes of, to get to the train station that Pace offers. One of those is their on-demand service and they let us know that they were implementing a new mobile phone application where commuters could sign up for either individual rides or they could even subscribe to being picked up at a certain time every day and dropped off at a certain time every day. So I hope that maybe some of our residents are availing themselves of that. Also, if in a certain neighborhood, there were a number of people who were traveling to the same place at the same time, Pace also offers the opportunity of the loan of a vehicle for that purpose and the driver does not have to pay the fee for that, but the other riders pay a nominal amount to use that. So based on that, it's, as well as the fact that in the media, we have seen that the rideshare companies are working on last mile travel programs right here in the Chicagoland area. And we have one of those major rideshare companies moving their headquarters to the city of Chicago. I think we can anticipate that the rollout of that type of service may be coming soon. So with all of those various alternatives, I believe when I did my third quarter presentation, we were at that point, we decided that because of the offerings that were already available that we could probably eliminate or say that this one, enough alternatives exist that we don't need to pursue it. And I just wanted to confirm that, you know, being that we're coming to the end of the year. Yes? Okay. The second transportation goal that we had was to create a plan for a second bridge. This was a dominant comment that was made in our previous community survey. What do we need, a second bridge? And we still see it commented on social media all the time. The problem is paying for it, right? Bridges are extremely expensive things. And so in the third quarter presentation that I did, I suggested the idea that perhaps we could look for a regional solution and in that way, find partners who are willing to partner with us in the benefit of the bridge as well as the cost of the bridge. And so in quarter, the first quarter of 2020, we're setting up those meetings. We have already had one meeting with North Aurora, would like to meet with Kane County as well to determine the feasibility of being able to work on that from a co-funding perspective. But also, we want to host public discussions in the first half of 2020 to determine really where the appropriate site for that bridge is and the commitment that people would be willing to make in order to fund that. Would they only be willing to fund a portion of a bridge and therefore the regional solution is really the direction that we should be going in? Or do they want a bridge so close to our downtown that is really just benefiting the city of Batavia and knowing that the financial burden for that would probably be ours alone? So look forward to having those discussions because there certainly are people also who think, we don't need a second bridge. So it will be very interesting to hear the results of those discussions. And the third is to identify and enhance the safe walking and biking routes to and through downtown. And I think a lot of good work was done on this particular objective this year. One of the things that we did was a focus group with different stakeholders from throughout the community. It's quite a large group. It was over a dozen people that we had and the result was a really nice list of recommendations that came from that. There was some low-hanging fruit, some inexpensive items that we were able to implement immediately, such as adding siding, signing to some of our more complex intersections that exist throughout our community, like South River Street and Wilson Street. And then we added signage to Wilson Street and Batavia Avenue. Both areas were cars and pedestrians, there was a lot of potential for conflict there. We also added sheros, the chevrons that are in the roadway on Shumway Avenue as well as Island. And those are to indicate to both bikers and bikes and motorists that they are, they should be aware that they are, they are sharing that path and to be careful of one another. But we've got a lot, a long list of things yet to accomplish and so we have put money into our 2020 budget so that we can accomplish more of the action items.
You know, Laura, if I may just interrupt?
Sure.
One thing for, you know, the safe walking through the downtown?
Yes.
Is planting, and it's also an enhancement, is planting trees.
Yes, and we heard about that in the presentation on the streetscape. That's excellent. Yeah, it gives that kind of screen between the pedestrian and the roadway that makes people feel safer and that's an important aspect of walkability as well. And then also, I'm so glad that we decided on that, City, the opportunity to move forward with the plans that it has had to work with our Batavia Main Street on creating wayfinding signage in our downtown that has been such a long time coming. And a couple of other actions that are under this objective, one was to try to complete the sidewalk path between the city of Geneva and the city of Batavia. And we, while the city of Geneva expressed an interest in working with us on that, we ran into the roadblock that there isn't a crosswalk on the leg of the, the west leg of the intersection of Fabian Parkway and Route 31. However, we were very pleased to be invited by Kane County to a meeting early this year to talk about finding a long-term solution to the problem orientation of that intersection that, and they have been holding meetings with stakeholders, they've set up a website for public comment. So it looks like at some point in the future, we will have a solution for the problems that exist, including the addition of that crosswalk. And then we can move forward with this because I think it would be a benefit to both communities for our residents to be able to have a continuous walk on the west side of Route 31 between our communities. And then also, the, there's the objective in our Strategic Action Plan regarding the stairs that are on the bike path on the east side of the pedestrian bridge out here. And earlier this year, we had a presentation from the robotics team here in Batavia who had engineered a solution to that. And we continue to talk with them. It's my understanding, did they place sixth in the state, in the state competition? I know they went to the state competition.
They were in the top. I know they were in the top three in each category.
Well, they did incredible and were really, Mark Foster knows, top five. So we're really proud of those guys and we want to continue to help them flesh out their idea. The next section of the Strategic Action Plan are Downtown Development Goals. And here, I think we're going to be seeing a lot of changes with the transition of Chris Aiston, our longtime Economic Development Consultant, announcing his retirement at the end of May and bringing on the new position of the Economic Development Manager in July of this year and combining the Departments of Community Development and Economic Developments. The first action item under this was to create a plan for downtown development. And as to start the conversation, we brought those big documents into city council, the downtown plan and also the streetscape framework. And from that meeting, the city council formed a subcommittee and they dug deeper into both of those documents to determine whether they are still appropriate for us today or whether we needed to go back to the drawing board. Abby and Mark did a presentation of the results of those committee meetings to determine that those documents are something that we can continue to work on in the future. And I think we made a commitment that on maybe a monthly or bimonthly basis, that we're going to work that plan so that we can bring those documents back and start accomplishing the objectives yet to be done in those plans. We also took a look at reviewing and revising our Economic Development Incentive Plans. There was one new economic incentive plan that was adopted and it was the Gateway Improvement Plan. And we have had two businesses that used that in 2019 and another business that's going to be using that in 2020. And we hope that there are many more applications because the purpose of that is to create an incredible streetscape approach to the heart of our downtown by offering an incentive to those property owners to really improve the look of their, of their buildings. And then with regard to the other incentives, it's anticipated that as we bring the Economic Development Manager onboard, that that would be among their first projects, would be to review what the current incentive programs are and suggest those that we should keep and perhaps propose others that we don't have that we should consider. Second, under, or I'm sorry, third under Downtown Development Goals is Process and Service Quality Improvement. The new staff member was hired in code enforcement and building inspection, which has been an incredible help. When, when Scott Buning gives his presentation, you'll see how many more permits that there were for the staff to review this year and from permits come work that needs to be inspected. And having that person onboard has allowed us to respond to those in a timely fashion, but it's also allowed other members of staff to focus on the high-level plan review that needs to be done to move larger projects along as well. We also completed customer service and conflict resolution training for all employees, not just in the Community Development and Economic Development Department, because all of us, at some point in our jobs, are interacting with the public, but we're also interacting with one another, even internally. Staff are customers of one another in terms of the work that we perform for each other. So we all got a lot out of that. And then also, we implemented some outward process improvements. The home permit process, instead of having to file multiple permits for home improvement projects, we consolidated it into one. It saved the residents' time, it saves them money, and internally, it saves on the efficiency of our work, not having to review multiple pieces of paperwork and instead having everything in one place. And then also code changes for landscape islands and beekeeping, those were implemented in November of this year. And then the last action item for downtown development is to increase, this is the way it's word, increase the availability of public parking spaces downtown. When we really looked at it and we took a look at the map of what is available for parking in our downtown, we realized that maybe what we've got is a perception. in our downtown, we realized that maybe what we've got is a perception problem as opposed to a quantity problem. Um we met with stakeholders and um we really did identify that the problem was probably more of perception. So one of the action items that we are taking is to create signage that we will put in our um major public parking assets so that if those are filled, people can see that there are numerous alternative places where uh they can park. But we don't want to end there because we really want to bring the discussion back to city council and show all of the different public parking and private parking assets that exist in our downtown so we can really analyze what our best strategies are to use that to its fullest potential. The third section of our uh strategic action plan are goals associated with the river. And um since I've come here, we have had a plan to create a master plan for future development of our waterfront in collaboration with the uh Park District. And funding is included in the 2020 budget for a study for potential river development projects. And um in, we also in uh the first quarter of this year had a meeting with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources because they have um renewed the funding source for uh dam modification and removal. And so hopefully we can avail ourselves of some resources to assist us with that. Under, the second goal under river is establish a funding source for riverbank stabilization. Um staff came to realize that that is really just probably going to be an element of the master plan for uh future development of our waterfront. And then finally, infrastructure, um commit to a base level of funding for all infrastructure. We had several meetings um last year and some pretty in-depth discussions that um Gary facilitated on July 16th, August 20th, and September 24th. Um and as a result, in the 2020 budget, we have included funding for some very major projects in the, on the streets. We've got funding for complete reconstruction of Main Street, uh complete reconstruction of um Prairie Street um from the uh the um stormwater. We are completing the projects in Ward 1, we're completing the projects in Area 3, um as well as from the uh for the the um stormwater, the, since we're doing the road reconstruction, we're also replacing the infrastructure that exists under those roads. And then also the um sidewalk program, we continue to fund that and um allocate that funding as um where it's needed the most. Um but in the future, of course, we see that there will be funding gaps. Um Oliver Beck earlier today um noted that there were periods of time in our past of explosive growth and that explosive growth unfortunately isn't enough to pay for the infrastructure that was created to support that growth. And it just so happens that a lot of that infrastructure needs to be addressed in the short term. But that's why um I'm really glad that this particular goal was part of our strategic action plan and um Public Works is working hard to make sure that um we know what's coming and that we're planning for today, what we will need in the short, medium, and long term and that funding sources will exist to support what's needed. So that's an overview of uh a lot that was accomplished in 2019 on our strategic action plan. Um next steps are the completion of the community survey, which will provide an enormous amount of data. Um I think it's important at least once per year for us to brush off the SWOT analysis where we re-identify what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are um because those, those are changing all of the time. Um and then within, after identifying that framework, to take a complete look at this and determine in what ways this needs to be revised in order to inform our next budget cycle. So I would plan that we would have our uh strategic plan meeting in um June of this year and it, maybe it is one meeting and and maybe it is two or three. We'll see how much there is. But I would, at any step along the way, whether it has to be what to do with the tools that we're using to track our progress, the type of information that you're getting about what actions are being taken and really anything about the process, I really appreciate your feedback so that we can just keep learning and keep making it a better process and a more useful process to everyone.
Question on the uh waterfront development, the budgeted 75,000 with the Park District. That 75,000 was not the cost of the study, it was the 50% share.
That's correct.
So what is the realistic likelihood that that will even happen due to the commitments that Park District is undertaking? If that's not a, it's not going this year, then does this even need to be budgeted?
I believe yes, and um so it's it's sort of like I'm giving the annual report, but here in the first quarter, we just had a meeting with the Park District and they brought their uh consultant for master planning for the river with them to that meeting. And so um from that meeting, what they're going to do is to uh try to develop a, a proposed scope of services. So I think that we may see a proposed scope of services and the potential for um work to begin on the master plan even this year. The, the Park District seemed committed to, to doing that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not all of a sudden finding another 75 to make sure this happens.
Right.
And undertake it ourselves.
I don't think so. I really felt the sense that um the Park District was willing to move forward on beginning work on the master plan this year.
Mark?
Um for parking, you talk about signs and stuff before I forget, um I think we need to do something about the signage going into where Marconi has his lot over by Andres'. It's extraordinarily confusing if you look at the signs because he, there is a sign that he has out there that says parking by permit only as you enter the parking lot. And I get he's got his spots, but somehow those need to be delineated because I can see somebody looking for spots, seeing that sign, being like, can I park here or not? And then driving away because they don't feel comfortable because they think they're gonna get a ticket. So if there's something we can do in that area, that'd be, work with him.
Yeah, you know, maybe we can say uh put one of the signs that we were contemplating about where is public parking in the downtown, something like, public parking is available in this lot in these spaces.
Yeah, I mean somehow we have to delineate it because it is confusing.
Is it being redesigned at all when they redo that parking lot?
No, because it's, we own, own, we own a part and he owns a part, so, but if you have suggestions.
Oh, okay.
When they resurface it, I think that would be the time to go in with new signage.
Yeah.
When that's done.
Color stripe, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Are, are his spots up against his buildings?
Yes.
Because like.
And in the middle.
Okay, that was the other thing, because the other thing was if they were up against the buildings, like behind where limestone is, they have spots with signs on the building that say these are for these spots, but if they're in the middle, middle too, probably when they resurface.
They're in the middle too. Ours are along the bike path.
Okay.
That could become an issue with boardwalk shops.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I have no idea where public and private spots are anywhere downtown where they are put together.
Mm-hmm.
So like you said, the perception of what's public, what's private, no one knows. It seems like there is no parking because it's hard to tell.
You know, one of the things that fades into the background are the um MUTCD approved signs, like parking is a green background with that, you know, white P on it and there are probably 20 of them downtown, but we don't ever see them because they like, we see them all the time and they disappear into the background. But one of the things that Public Works did develop when um we built the Larson Becker parking lot was the Giants parking sign, which not everyone was a fan of.
I love it. I think it's great. Everybody gets to see it.
But it does.
It would be a place to use that.
Rotate it around, you know, and advertise the different parking lots. I thought it was kind of funny.
Especially with the um boardwalk shops around, that might be the opportunity.
Well, I think it'd be a great thing to be a line item app on the website where you could have parking map and you could have that on, place on your phone, so when you got there, you'd hit the button and you could find parking. I mean, it, it's very interesting that I have, I have an app for our, that we have for our time clock at work.
Yes.
And when you clock out or go to lunch or whatever, it punches up downtown Batavia and it shows you all the places you can go to to eat, all the places where there's parking.
Yeah.
I mean, and it's marked out pretty well for a little tiny time clock app that's linked up to that. And if we had something similar to that on the city website where you could have that and click it. I'm just trying to think of another way that's easy to get to that wouldn't require another 500 signs in downtown.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Because I think that's gonna be our logo when we get around to, or our tagline when we get around to talking about that, is the city of signs.
Look at that.
I, I, I'm not joking, I mean, you drive around and look and see how many signs we have within.
It's everywhere.
10 blocks around this.
We need to make the signs visible.
Right.
That they, they, people can notice them now you drive by.
It means something so that way they pay attention to them because another 10 signs doesn't help if they aren't usable.
So remember, we've got city maps down here and all kinds of city maps. And one of them um was developed by our GIS specialist, Mike Kamen, our downtown parking map. Um, I'm close. So you can zoom in and here are, it tells you what all the different parking opportunities are. But I feel like, so Griffin is in the process of developing a map that is a little bit more user-friendly.
And that's what I'm thinking.
You know, you need like the whole parking lot covered with a color, I feel, to, to really, I don't know, draw the eye to where I could put my car in this downtown, right?
Can you go to the Andres' one? I mean, it doesn't look like any, there are any dots there.
It's the gray.
It's.
It's the gray parking, so it makes it very hard to, that, that's why I'm glad you pulled that up there and, and showed that.
Yeah.
That's, I wanted to make it easier than.
And then we can eliminate that.
It is the use now, so that way one, it only takes a couple clicks to get to it.
Right.
And it's something simple and maybe that'll drive up the hits of the website.
Right.
Or an app that's connected to the website.
Spot here.
Then we're charging for her.
So, and the Marconi lot though, just pulling up this one.
Mm-hmm.
It just shows a gray blob and it just says, no information available. So if you were pulling it up.
See, that's why.
It, it might not give you the right, I think.
I thought that was all private.
Of, it doesn't show how many spots. It just shows, you can park here to here.
Put your parking brake on and turn the wheels all the way to one side.
Yeah.
Makes it really hard to tow.
You almost need to go with like a bright color that stands out, like maybe one of the colors from our logo.
And one of the things is putting it a place where people are gonna look for it because I mean, I'm not sure if I went to a town, if I would go to the city's website and look for sitting and then, you know what I mean? So I've been trying to think in my own mind when I visit another city. So that's a little bit where, how we got the idea for putting up the signs in the parking lots because I was uh in Aurora and I drove into one of their par, public parking lots and it was full. But I remember just as I drove in, there was a whole sign about where other parking in the area was.
Do we, do we restripe our own um lots?
So um Rahat has done a wonderful job of um putting all of the surface parking and public parking lots on a um maintenance schedule. So yes, we regularly.
No, do, do we actually do the restriping work?
No.
Okay. My quest, my, my thought process was.
Like we redid the north parking lot here and the contractor did the striping on it because we do have strippers.
If, if we were doing that, someone mentioned something about a different color.
Mm-hmm.
For the striping.
Mm-hmm.
That kind of goes along with our new logo.
Interesting idea.
If we're gonna restripe it anyway.
On one of the mayor's walking tours, we met with Michael Marconi.
Yes.
And the two of them were talking about possibility getting into a uh land use agreement for parking, anything ever come of that.
He is willing to talk if we, uh, you know, I think that one of the things that complicates that is the fact that the bank building is not occupied right now, so um on the one hand, the bank doesn't have customers, but we don't know what type of business is going to lease the bank. And so he was thinking, when it was a bank, he was okay with nights, nights and weekends giving those spaces up, but if it were to become something like, let's say a restaurant, um, they may need all of those parking spaces. So we were, we certainly, he's amenable to conversations about the ways that those spaces could be shared.
Does it show up on Google Maps when you like, uh, uh, when I go to a new city, when I go downtown, I guess their parking garages, so they would show up as an address, but that's how I always find parking when I go to cities, I just look at Google. Our parking lots show up as public parking.
And those can be added. You can put them in there.
Hmm. I don't know the answer to that question, but I'll investigate it.
Parking tickets comes up as the second thing.
Would you like a parking ticket?
Parking regulations. Car stops, parking lots, what?
No, it does not. And that could be added as a layer in there, somebody could add that in.
Mm-hmm.
And the focus groups might give us some ideas too from the community. They've seen, I do like the idea of using the.
Different color.
Strike.
Mm-hmm.
Distinguished city parking.
There's a park it bike rack listed over off of State Street. That's interesting.
But like, what are they all doing on their phones?
I know, right? People are watching it all.
Yeah.
We're all pretending that we're like.
Is the meeting still going?
We're trying to find where to park if you want to.
We're all 14 years old and we're all at the same table. Is that how this works?
No, we're not texting back and forth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Please don't do that, that's illegal.
Send a text to the other side of the table.
Pokeman go.
Yeah.
Who's got the Pokeman?
Okay, we digress. Let's get back on this.
All right, Chairman.
We'll move on to project status. Anything changed since last night?
Nothing has changed since last night, but I did want to bring up that um there are several stakeholders who are coming, I've used that word a lot tonight, haven't I? But I think it's a really good word because we like to collaborate with those outside our organization.
Stakeholders.
Um, hold that state. Um, no, on the bike share program that the county is sponsoring, um as it turns out, the Park District is going to be participating in that as well. And the library, while they are not interested in purchasing bikes, would like to have a bike rack at their location. So the city and the Park District and the Bicycle Commission and Main Street are all gonna meet on March 2nd and we're gonna talk about trying to uh coordinate our efforts with regard to this bike share program so that uh Batavia pulls off a really nice effort on uh the bike share and, and make ourselves one of the main destinations and um bike, places where you can get a bike as well. So the problem with that is it took a long time for the county to negotiate the contract with Holony. I only just got that last week and they are saying, um please give us your order for the bikes by February 29th. Um, and because we're working with a lot of outside organizations, we're meeting on March 2nd, so we may be a little bit late with our bike order, but I recall when Ryan was doing the presentation that he said it's um like a, a two-month lead time or something for ordering the bike, so I think that there's a little bit of. So I think that there's a little bit of wiggle room in there, but um we'll do our best to order as as soon as possible. But I think we really want to make sure that we coordinate with one another so that we're maximizing the potential of what we get here in Batavia. Uh what else? On February 25th, we will have video gaming conversation come back as well as um a discussion with Main Street about the place of the boardwalk shops as well as um providing utility to um to that project as well. Um, let's see, what else? That's about it compared to, I shared a lot of it last night, so unless anybody has any questions about specific projects.
Any other questions? Anybody have any others on project status?
Just a quick question on others. So um Mike brought up a great point about trees and that sort of stuff. Would there ever be any consideration for, we have the tree sharing program?
Mm-hmm.
That maybe we would do that for ones downtown where maybe a resident would want to go have these and you can dedicate a memorial for that tree. I know my dad has one up in St. Charles um that was bought where they donated a tree and it's got a plaque. That might be an interesting way to encourage putting the trees down and that the city would only incur half the cost and somebody might want to have a monument tree in the downtown. And it kind of goes along with, it's in the Parkway and I think that for the prices on there, if those would be the trees that might be different.
Right.
But it might be a way to spur encouragement and get some investment from people who they know would probably want to do.
You know, Marty, that's a great idea and and.
You said it.
But but you bringing bringing the partnership in with the the public. I mean, you know, the city of Geneva, they have people come springtime and they have the planters all throughout the city. They're downtown and they got people who kind of like adopt that planter and they they fill it. We should try, we have Batavia Access, we should try to do something similar to that, I believe.
Actually, so the Batavia Access um is the the fireworks and the toy drive. We really don't have a pool of volunteers, but soon um Britta McKenna is going to be coming to talk to us about a new program for Fox Valley volunteers. And that might be something that we could put up there and see if a a pool of volunteers could be established. However, um the city has provided resources for dedicated personnel for our downtown um to be dedicated to take care of the the flowers that exist in the downtown. But I wonder if there aren't other areas that could be improved like that, you know, adopting their corner.
Well, there are. I mean, I I know on the corner of Wilson and Woodland Hills, people who live on the corner there, you know, that has the Woodland Hills sign.
Right.
And those people, they take care of that and they they do plantings there. I just wanted, if if, you know, a planter's in our downtown on Wilson Street, we had, you know, families come in, say two families come in, they say, we're gonna adopt this one planter. They plant, they buy the they buy the plants and they they fund the whole thing and they do the whole thing on their own. The only thing the city would be involved in would be possibly watering it after it's all planted. And those people come in and they maintain it for the seasons. Uh if if we can get something like that, I mean, it just takes the the burden off of our Public Works and and people have more ownership of the downtown. You know, the residents have more ownership if we can get something like that started. So just a thought.
Yeah. There, it's a great thought. And there is the Batavia Plain Dirt Gardeners. It's an organization that already exists. That might be a good partnership with Batavia Plain Dirt Gardeners, gardeners. The Environmental Commission, I'm sure, would love to be a part of that and.
Maybe the school.
So you won't have to, you know, create another organization to find the volunteers. I think you already have the volunteers out there just putting putting the groups together and saying, hey, this is what we would like you to do, you know, because I think stealing other people's ideas is.
Har for the course.
The ones in Geneva all have plaques, that's like the Rotary, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, like everybody's got a corner there.
No, it's a great idea, it's just instills community pride.
It does.
Something a streetscape committee could work on.
Yeah. Any others? Motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Second.
Second, Mike Callahan and others. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Those who carries.
You can stay.
You can stay.